Marie, can we please have roll call?
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Fed?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Rayle?
Here.
Okay, we'd like to start our meeting tonight with special recognition of our district employee, Ardell Mueller. Would you please step up? Ardell Mueller retires from her position in the Learning Resource Center at East Junior High after 19 years with Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. She stated she has enjoyed working with the students at East and now it is time to start a new chapter in her life. Ardell started in the district as a nunia at Woodside Elementary and then transferred to East Junior High to work with English and the second language student. She then transferred to a position in the Learning Resource Center at East. Ardell has been involved in managing the soccer concessions for the past 20 years, which also includes running soccer concessions for tournaments. She ran concessions as well for the spring and fall, boys and girls leagues for several years, and served on the soccer Board of Characters for several years. Ardell enjoys cross stitching, folk art painting, sewing, and gardening. Her future plans are to spend more time with her two granddaughters, fishing up north in the summer, and spend three to four months in Florida during the winter months. Ardell, we wish you all the best in your retirement and thank you for your many years of service to the students of Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. Congratulations. We have our recognition service from Tony Evers, the State Superintendent of Department of Urban Construction. In recognition of 19 years of commitment and service to the educational wellbeing of our young people, these contributions are acknowledged with this expression of grateful appreciation. Anything you'd like to say?
Not really.
Well, thank you. Enjoy your retirement. All right, we'll move on to the minutes.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of May 12th, the special Board of Education meeting open and closed session minutes of May 12th, and the special Board of Education closed session of May 28th.
Okay, we have motion to second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes from May 12th, 2014, the special Board of Education meeting minutes, open and closed session of May 12th, 2014, and the special Board of Education meeting closed session minutes from May 28th, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Comments from citizens and delegations, do we have any, Marie? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. John is down watching his son in the state golf tournament tonight, so Katie, she would give a report from Business Services Committee.
Yeah, so Business Services Committee met on June 2nd, 2014, and starting with 4:30, they offered a tour of the building for this house project, the tour to show what the students have been working on this year, the 2014-14 high school students. It was a house for Chad and Jill Waller. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to the tour, but I heard that it was really very, very nice.
Beautiful home.
They've done a wonderful job this year. Then we had three consent agenda items. The VS1 is the transportation contract approval, VS2, the inter-district agreement, and VS3, the technology purchase. And I want anything held out. Okay, so VS1, we had, oh shoot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it happens sometimes.
That would be Tracy, yeah. Sorry. Never kill you dead. So, we had the transportation negotiations, and we had a contract that we agreed to. We had discussed earlier, and so we had the contract agreed that had been recommended for approval earlier. And then VS2 was the 660301 Cooperative Agreement for Students for the Virtual Program. We had students coming in, two students from Spencer coming into the virtual school. And VS3 was the purchase of 124 LG 22-inch computer monitors from IT Savvy, and the total cost is $14,282,32 cents of funding from the 2014-15 technology budget. So, the committee recommends, I recommend, and I also make a motion to accept VS1, VS2, VS3.
Second motion. Okay, we have motion to second to approve VS1, 2, and 3. Could you please have roll call on them, Marie? Does the contract?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Fed?
Yes.
Thank you, Marie.
Okay, then we had an update. We had a library purchase. We had licenses, basically, for the streaming, for the K-A licenses, I think that was for virtual. And finally, we have also minutes to approve from May 21st of closed session and June 2nd closed session. And the committee goes in and makes a motion to accept those closed session meetings.
Second motion. Okay, we have motion to second to accept the committee meeting minutes closed session from May 21st and June 2nd, and also the Business Service Committee meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And approved. Thank you, Katie. Next, we will go to Personnel Services.
Personnel Services met last Monday, June 2nd, and out of that meeting, we had 15 consent agenda items. I think that's more than we have held out last year, really. First one, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the one professional staff early retirement. Two, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the one support staff retirement. Third, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the three professional staff resignations. Fourth, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the two non-represented, non-union professional staff resignations. Fifth, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the four support staff resignations. Sixth, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the six professional staff appointments. Seven, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the two support staff appointments. Eight, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the three summer grounds appointments. Nine, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the one summer school support staff appointment. Tenth, the committee recommends, and I move to approve the one professional staff volunteer reduction at Lincoln High School. Eleven, this is an action on department chair pay structures. The committee recommends, and I move to approve the new stipend payment structure to take effect beginning of the 214-15 school year for professional staff who will fulfill department chair assignments. Basically, each tier or level of the chairmanship are going to be less $500 next year. Twelve, the committee recommends, and I move to approve revisions to the vacation benefit language section of the Office Clerical and Aid Support Staff Employee Handbook. Upon ad, when we approved this, we found that we had eight long-term employees that were going to end up with less vacation than when before the handbook. So, we're just grandfathering them in. They're not going to lose any vacation. They're going to stay where they were. That's that change. Thirteen, the committee recommends, and I move to approve changes to the insurance eligibility language in the Custodians Maintenance and Computer Text Employee Handbook. That's just like what we did to the teachers, going from 50% to 80%, or working 30 hours per week in order to get insurance. This will take effect the 1st of July. Fourteen, the committee recommends, and I move to approve students requesting to attend the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools under the open enrollment law pending a review of discipline records and special services needs. And fifteenth, last one, the committee recommends, and I move to approve students requesting to attend non-resident school districts under the open enrollment law pending a review of discipline records and special services needs. If you look at them, lots of times, we'll have parents that will, gonna say they're going to opt out, and they'll maybe shoot at two or three different school districts. And we also had a lot that said they were going to McFarland. McFarland does extensive advertising on the TV, the K-12 ads. You know, they have a virtual program. Our virtual program is as good, if not better, than theirs. We can't or haven't done advertising in the past, and that's where, I think we're seeing some discrepancies now. Kind of like behind the eight ball. I think there's some going on that we're going to try to let our people in our district know that we have this virtual program, that we're as good, if not better, than McFarland. Does anybody want anything held out? I'd second those motions.
Okay, we have motion to second to approve PS1 through PS15. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And with that, I move that the minutes from the June 2nd Personnel Services Committee meeting be approved as printed.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion to second to approve the meeting minutes from the Personnel Service Committee meeting of June 2nd, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Sandy. Next, we'll move on to Educational Services Committee. Anne?
Thanks, John. Educational Services also met last Monday on June 2nd. We had no public comment. Excuse me, I've got the wrong paper here. Okay. We have two consent agenda items, with the third one being tabled. Does anyone want either one of those held out?
I think you're going to hold out the five-year contract from the MEAT charter.
Do I have the wrong one? Okay.
I don't think I can correct that, but I think that was to discuss.
Yes, yes.
Right.
I'm sorry, yeah. Right. Okay. Our first consent agenda item was on District Professional Development Plan. Kathy Stebbins-Hince, who is director of, who is Director of Curriculum and Instruction, don't worry Kathy, I'm not mentioning anything, reviewed the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools Professional Development Plan for the 2014-15 school year. She pointed out that this year's plan was different, and that teachers will no longer be doing an individual professional development plan. In accordance with the state mandated educator effectiveness system principles, and teachers will develop school and student learning objectives using the district plan as their guide. So, a motion was made to approve the 2014-15 Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools Professional Development Plan. We went on to the MEAT Elementary Charter School Contract, and-
Are we going to do that separate?
That's the one we're going to do separate, you're right. And then we went on to high school credit for eighth grade students, and Kathy again reviewed the 2013 Wisconsin Act 138, allowing school districts to count a credit, count as a credit, I believe there's a hole in my paper, that a pupil earns in grade seven or eight towards high school credits. Because of the unique nature of the eighth, ninth, and then the 10, 12 schools' class structure, WRPS currently offers over 19 courses in which eighth and ninth grade students are enrolled simultaneously. Ninth grade students receive credit toward high school graduation in these courses, and eighth grade students do not. With the passage of Act 138, the board would, could grant high school credit to eighth grade students that take any and/or all of these courses. Board members felt the Council for Instructional Improvement should meet to discuss the implications of this new law, and then bring a recommendation to the board. So, that is, we voted to table that one. So, I make a motion to, yeah. The committee makes a motion, or recommends, and I make a motion to approve ES1.
Second.
Okay, my motion to second. Anne, would you like-
Well, and three, because of the table.
But that was as Ed Services Committee, so as a board.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm-
I would just include it in there.
I have a very, I have a very hard day, excuse me, and ES3. So, Katie, would you-
So, you guess my ES3.
Okay. There's motion to second to approve ES1 and ES3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, then, we had quite a bit of discussion about the MEAT Elementary Charter School Contract, and Margie Dorhorse, who is here, she's the principal at MEAT Elementary Charter School, as well as members of the school's governing council, they were all present to seek approval of the Charter School Contract. Council members present included Christopher Gash, Tina Miller, Shelley Moon, Amy Scheid, and Sue Schill. The Charter School, is Tina Miller a member of the governance council?
She's not on the council.
She's not on the council, so, oh man, there you are, Margie, sorry. So, that should be changed there, because Tina Miller's not a council member. Okay. She's a, an employee, yeah, okay. The Charter School Contract for MEAT Elementary Charter School expires at the end of 2013-14 school year. Discussion took place about what the length of the contract should be. The biggest concern for the administration was having language in the contract that would not be binding should the facility study impact MEAT. It was agreed that the contract would be modified to include language, enabling the board to terminate the contract in the event of facility changes, closure, or other restructuring. So, are we, you're going to talk about-
Yeah, and I passed out a copy of the language that I had sent to Margie. I know her governing council met this afternoon.
And they approved it.
And approved it, so it's a matter of whether or not you're comfortable with this language. I don't know if you have questions about it.
Are these two copies the same, the one we got?
Yes.
Oh.
One's highlighted and this one's not, so you could see the changes clearly. I just didn't know if you'd have that with you. On Monday, primarily, the language we were looking at was the 2.6 piece. That was the main language we were looking at. And then in 2.5, 6873, those were some other minor changes, just to clarify.
Is everyone comfortable with the changes?
So, then we would just need a motion to approve the MEAT Charter for whatever duration of time you propose.
I would make a motion to approve the MEAT Charter for extending it for five years with the change in the-
Okay, we have motion to second to approve the MEAT Charter School Contract with the noted revisions in language that we have in front of us tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, then we went on to updates. Our first update was about response to intervention, and Kathy Stebbins-Hince and Amy Ryan, who was our literacy supervisor, reviewed a PowerPoint highlighting RTI and how it successfully affected WRPS students during the 2013-14 school year. Highlights of the presentation included the implementation process, 2013-14 data, resources utilized, accomplishments, next steps, and future needs. Several of the district's interventionists were in attendance to share success stories, including Tracy Pronga, Nicole Reed, Roxanne Fields, Jennifer Willhorn, Liz Otteri, Cindy Kane, and Molly Murphy. District psychologist Judy Esselman and Steve Smith were also in attendance. Then we were updated on the Lincoln High School scheduling, and Ron Rasmussen, who is the principal of Lincoln High School, provided an update of the scheduling proposal at Lincoln High School. Mr. Rasmussen reviewed the process taken by the Lincoln High School Scheduling Committee since April of 2013. Since presenting to the board in January of 2014, there have been meetings with students, parents, and teachers. On Wednesday, May 28th, the ballot was taken by the Lincoln faculty. 83.1% were in favor of a trimester block schedule. 16.9% were opposed. Kathy asked the board if they needed any further information from administration before approaching the board in July or August for approval of the scheduled change. And then we talked very briefly about the WKCE tests, and Kathy asked board members if they had any questions regarding the additional WKCE data set out in the attachment. Leslie Lewison, who is Assistant Director of Pupil Services, was present to review test data specific to ELL students. She noted that scores had greatly improved and shared handouts reflecting this data. It was noted that the WRPS ELL students were consistently doing better than the state average. So, with that, the committee recommends, and I move the adoption of the minutes of the Educational Services Committee meetings of June 2nd.
Second. Okay, motion to second to approve the meeting minutes from the Educational Service Committee meeting of June 2nd, 2014. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seems like we did a lot more that night, because-
Oh, gosh, yes. That was the longest meeting we've had in a long time.
Thank you, Anne. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Referrals and Information Requests.
I have a question concerning an explanation of a bill. Should I ask for an explanation now, or wait till bills?
Do the bills? Let me do the bills, maybe?
Okay.
Okay. Any other agenda referrals, information requests? Okay, we'll move on to legislative agenda. Marie, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I just pulled up the legislative update from our Wisconsin Association of School Boards, which was June 6th. And there were a couple of things I just want to just read you from there. One was, one had to do with the Wisconsin School Report Cards, and it says that the new report from the Education Commission of the states gives Wisconsin a pretty good grade on its school report cards. The report praises Wisconsin's success in two of three aspects of state accountability systems throughout the nation for gaining recognition. One among parents for the accessibility and clarity of school reports, and two among experts for reporting and meeting all five essential indicators identified in the report. Wisconsin was among the top six states chosen by parents for the readability and usefulness of its statewide report card. Parents identified six state report cards, including Wisconsin's, as the best of the 50 states based on ease of reading, providing sufficient data, and overall usefulness. The experts surveyed considered five indicators: student achievement, student academic growth, achievement gap closure, graduation rates, and post-secondary and career readiness, crucial to building a new strong accountability system. There were only nine states, California, Colorado, Kentucky, New Mexico, North Carolina, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Utah, and Wisconsin, that currently collect, use, and report all five of these indicators. The report praised Wisconsin as one of only two states whose report cards were top picks by the parents in the study while also meeting and reporting every essential indicator. So, then, we get that grade. So, then, the next article that I found interesting was, despite these high marks, lawmakers explore changes to school report cards, sanctions for low-performing schools. And despite the positive marks given to Wisconsin's report cards, a number of lawmakers want to make further adjustments and broaden their impact, particularly as private schools that accept voucher students are brought into the accountability system. Two, a state senator from Milwaukee and a representative from Kokona are among legislative leaders over renewed effort to revamp the state's school report card system for all publicly funded schools, including public schools, independent charter schools, and private voucher schools. Among the changes they are likely to seek involves specifying sanctions such as closure, conversion to a charter school, reopening with new principal and staff, et cetera, for schools that repeatedly fail to meet expectations. Earlier this year, lawmakers enacted a compromise proposal that did not change report card provisions and did not include sanctions, but did require the state superintendent to assure that every independent charter school and every private school that accepts voucher students is supplying student data using the information system or a compatible system by 2015-2016. The new law further provides that the state superintendent may withhold state payments from a private voucher school that fails to comply. So, I thought that was kind of interesting.
See what happens in the next session.
Yep, sure.
Okay, next, we'll move on to the bills.
Okay, oh, okay. I would make a motion that the receipt's been ordered and the bills are printed.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. It's on page 53, maybe, I know we have to pay it, but maybe next month, we can just have an explanation. At the very bottom, to Wood County Health Department, we have a bill for $4,900. They're checking our kitchens and our pool. A, how many kitchens are they checking? Do, what people we read about in the paper, do they pay this also? I just, you know, we just get nickled and dimed against various public agencies, and this just stuck out and was a little, I think, exorbitant.
So, you want to know how many kitchens were inspected?
Well, how many kitchens, and, you know, what do they do? I mean, is it one of these, like, you know, there wasn't a sign, and the towel was on the counter, and it should have been, you know, is it this?
They do look at that, yes. It is interesting, I mean, it's in the newspaper. They have the results of the inspections from all the private businesses. You don't see it for the-
And do they, do they have to pay? Yeah. And, you know, when they look at our pool, is it, are we just paying because we have a pool? Okay, here's a license, you have a pool, now pay us. I mean, I just, money's money.
The permit, we have that, I mean, permit is, yes, we have a pool, so we have to get a permit, then, that's just, that doesn't matter. But the kitchen inspections, I'm not sure.
Okay. It was just, it stuck out. Okay, that's all.
John, I have a question, too, but I forgot my bills. I really have had an interesting day.
It is Monday.
Yeah, there, I, see, now I won't be able to find it. I had it turned over on mine. But there was a conference that a bunch of teachers went to in Las Vegas.
Yeah, it's Charter.
Yeah, but in some places, there was a smaller amount, and in other places, it was over double that. And I wondered why that was.
I've asked that in the past, and sometimes, the people do their own booking. So, if somebody books early or whatever, it's this amount, and then if somebody books some other time, it's a different amount. There isn't a group booking.
Okay, that's it?
Okay, that's what it was a couple minutes ago. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second to pay the bills for the month. Could you please have roll call, Marie?
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Fed?
Well, yeah.
Egrudgingly. All right, thank you, Marie. Next, we'll move on to new business. Our first item is discussion and possible action to approve Project Search Grant Opportunity with the ODC.
I'd like to introduce Pam Ross, who is president at ODC, so I could run-
That is correct.
And she has a short presentation. She called me, I'm not sure when we first had that conversation, but she's here to give an overview. I gave you a little insight into it, but she'll give us a more detailed picture.
Okay, well, thank you for having me. I'll do a brief overview, just a little bit of background. ODC is currently involved in Project Search in Marshfield. We are not the lead agency, and as I explain a little bit more about the program, you'll understand what the lead agency is, but we're one of the partners. And we are in our, just ended our third year of Project Search and going into our fourth year. It's a high school transition program, which I'll get into a little bit more. The reason I'm so excited about Project Search and why we approached the Wisconsin Rapids School District and this community is because I've been with ODC almost 30 years, and this is probably one of the most exciting programs when you look at the intensity of it and the impact it has on students with disabilities in getting them ready for employment, and being able to be, go right out into the community and employment after finishing their high school education. So, what is Project Search? And I'm, oh, you know what, I'm going to have to plug this one back in because the remote one's not helping. So, Project Search is an employment training program for students and young adults with significant disabilities. It's focusing and targeting high school students who have completed their credits for graduation, can also include host high school students, but it prioritizes those who have not graduated yet. Generally, it's eight to 12 students, and I'll get a little bit more into, they spend their final year of high school at a host business site. Rather than going to school, they're at a host business site. In Marshfield, that happens to be Ministry St. Joe's Hospital.
And it may be their fifth-
What's that?
It may be a fifth year.
Right, right. Whatever is considered their last year, or it could be that extended year. So, at the classroom, or part of the opportunity, or part of the day is spent in classrooms. The hospital provides a room, and the school district in Marshfield provides an instructor who is there with the students, just like they would be in a regular classroom. But all of the curriculum is focused on employment readiness. Everything they do is talking about employment. And then, a big part of the, and the key part of the experience is the work site internships. Each student has three different unpaid internships that are about 10 weeks in length in various departments, and I'll give you some examples in a moment. The goal of all of-
The goal of all of this is that the student would be ready for competitive, community-integrated employment. There's been a lot of talk, and maybe you're hearing that within your industry, I'm certainly hearing it in mine. If there's any way that we can get individuals with disabilities out into the community in integrated work settings, that's a preference over having them come to a work facility like ODC and then moving gradually toward that process. And this is one way that students can really get ready in a very intensive program to get out into the community. Little history on it, it started in Cincinnati. Erin Riley, in 1996, she was a nurse within the hospital and developed this idea of internships for students with disabilities. And it's grown from her program to 200, over 200 across the United States and four additional countries. It's a trademarked licensed program. So you have to, once you are a Project Search model, you have to follow their model, you have to be audited, you have to make sure that you're following their standards, and it's pretty rigorous, making sure that the program is replicated and operated the same way in, even in varying communities. You can see a little bit of a map into the states that Project Search is right now. And in Wisconsin, there's seven sites right now. Ministry St. Joe's in Marshfield, I consider, I think, is the most rural location that this program operates in. There are two in Madison hospitals, again, Milwaukee Children's Hospital in Wauwautosa, Walmart Distribution Center in Menominee, and Ministry St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Appleton. Most of these are hospitals, but the program does not have to operate in a hospital, it just happens to fit for a lot of reasons. The hospitals generally can offer so many opportunities for a variety of internships. Really, the business that you select for your host business just has to be large, 150 employees or more with multiple departments, so that there's multiple different types of opportunities for students. They're not all in the same type of internship, yet it can function because you're in one building that those that are supporting these students can get quickly from one student to another student during the day to provide support. In Governor Walker's State of the State address, he announced what was called a Better Bottomline Initiative. He really took some time to emphasize the, his goal and the state's goal to increase integrated employment opportunities for people with disabilities, which is good news for organizations like us. It's also a lot of pressure, because we know that in our industry, having an array of choices is very good. Some people really do benefit and need the time in the work center, others want to and can go right out into the community. So it's good to increase integrated employment. One of the ways he announced is that the state was going to support expanding Project Search. As I mentioned, it's in seven communities now. He announced that he wants to expand it by 20 sites in Wisconsin over three years. The first round of RFPs started this year, and we had to submit an application. If we wanted to start in 2015, that application was due in 2014. I'll back up a little bit now and say that in January, we had an informational meeting. I think it was the day after the State of the State address. It was coincidental, we had no idea that was going to be in his speech. We just were interested in getting going and talking about it with our area school representatives from not just Wisconsin Rapids, but Nacusa Port Edwards. We invited three potential host businesses. We invited everybody who we would consider a partner, just to talk about it. And Anne Dick, who is the lead and the instructor in the Marshfield site, was there to provide an overview, just to see if there was interest. And then we continued, we had another discussion with the school districts specifically to address some of the specific questions that we would have as a school district, and how would this work? And then we also had a tour with Riverview Hospital, is actually the business that, after this meeting, just stood right up and said, "We want to be part of this, we're so excited, can we be the host business?" We also invited Midstate Technical College and Renaissance Learning as two potential businesses, and Riverview just raised their hand and stepped forward, and we do think that for many reasons, they would be an excellent host business site. So we took Nan Taylor from Riverview Hospital to Marshfield, to St. Joe's, and she got to meet some of the students and experience what it was like, and asked lots of questions on how they started it up there. So really, revolving around the student, or all these partners, ODC, within this, our role is the job coaching. When the students get the internships, we're helping to identify the internship opportunities and get them started, help work with that department, provide training for the student, and also, at the end of the year, we have to develop a job for them. That's our second part of the goal. It does not have to be at the host business, it's a little bit of a bonus. If the host business hires, and every year we've had somebody hired at Ministry St. Joe's, this past year, we were really excited. On graduation, they announced that one of the students was competitively hired as a pharmacy technician in their outpatient pharmacy, which is huge. Full-time, he applied for it competitively, so never would he have had that opportunity. He thought, when he went into Project Search, he would be interested in maybe garbage collection or something like that, and within that context of three different internships, found that his attention to detail and process was just very, very strong. And his coworkers were the one that encouraged him to apply for this. So that's always exciting when you see that, that impact on that person. The work site partner, as I mentioned, is St. Joe's. The school district, or districts, in this case, we felt because Wisconsin Rapids, again, is a rural community, we really need to look at combining forces and using open enrollment and other ways to have enough students to justify the cost of the instructor and to support the cost of the instructor. Division of Vocational Rehabilitation pays ODC for job coaching, and all these students have to apply for being part of DVR. And then a long-term provider, most of the students need long-term support, and they qualify for that type of programming. And in our community, there's multiple, but the largest is Community Care of Central Wisconsin. So those are all the partners involved, and they each have different roles. I kind of already touched on that, but the public education for high school students is, the commitment there is, is the cost of the instructor, and that's the, yet to be determined exactly how that will work, but we took a leap of faith and submitted the application, knowing that we've got some time to determine. If we get accepted, then we've got to figure it out. If we don't get accepted, there's two more years to try it again. So I talked a little bit about the costs that are involved. Really, the host business site is more in-kind. They've got management time, and they've got resources and space, but they don't have a financial commitment. This is just a little bit of an overview of how the years have worked in Marshfield. So Marshfield High School, if you look at the total, they started with only four students. This year, we had seven. Next year, they're projecting seven. So if you look at next year, three from the high school, two from open enrollment, two from post-high school, can be in this until you're 25. So they're still not at the ideal eight to 12, and I think that is one of the inherent challenges in a rural community, is identifying enough students who are qualified for the program, since it is relatively rigorous. You have to have, I mean, some of the basics, hygiene, social and communication skills, ability to take direction and change behavior, pass background checks, complete TB tests, those types of things. But really, because of the rigorous demands of the program, they have to have a desire to work, and they have to have a desire to really follow through, because they're going to get pushed really hard, not only by the teacher, but by ODC as the job coaches work with them. So it works September to May, just like the school year. Start out, and within a very short period of time, we figure out that first rotation, get them going. That first week of the first rotation for eight students, you can imagine the job coaches are running ragged. They don't all start the same day, but it's still a lot, trying to get each student and each department to adjust and get going. So typical day, they come 8:30 to 2:30, they check in with the instructor, go out on the internship, have lunch, do the second part of the day on internship, and then come back to the classroom. I think that probably changes, you know, day to day, but that's generally a schedule that they would go through. I think I've touched on most of that already. The internships, a variety. That's what's really neat about the hospital. There are anything ranging from housekeeping and janitorial all the way up to working in PACU or PICU or the ER, some really neat positions. Some are very customized because of the functioning level of the student, and some are competitive, and they're just working as though they were a regular employee within that department in a lot of demands. The curriculum, as I mentioned, is all about work readiness. This is just some examples. They might focus on how to get around the hospital at St. Joseph's, that's a big part of the curriculum. Terminology, medical terminology, social skills, how do you introduce yourself to somebody that walks into the hospital, time, signs, just all of those types of things that are going to help them. With the employment goal of at least 16 hours a week in the community once they're done, at or above minimum wage. The first year was four graduates, and again, they went through a variety of internships, and I'll just point out, Brandon was the superstar of year one. Got hired in PACU, which is the peri-anesthesia care unit, where the patients are getting prepped for surgery or coming back from surgery. Prior to Brandon's internship, RNs were doing the cleanup and the reorganizing and sanitizing between all of those things. Brandon's internship was to do that, and they found that this was just a huge help for the RNs to focus on patient care, plus he was really good at this, and he could handle being around patients and has a really bubbly personality, to say the least. Took a lot of doing with the way the hospital's HR policies work to even make this happen, that they did eventually hire him 20 hours a week, so that the RNs could focus on patient care. They were focused on FTEs. We don't have a budget for FTEs, but RNs were making $40 an hour doing this. Brandon is probably making between $8 and $9 an hour, which is pretty appropriate for the type of tasks that he's doing. It's a win-win-win all the way around, and he's been there since the end of that school year. 2013, started with seven, we had one student that didn't make it all the way through. Again, a variety of experiences and a variety of outcomes. I should say, the first year, all four students were hired at the end of the year somewhere. Only one in the hospital, three outside of the hospital. The second year, they hired one in the hospital, but we have one young lady that's working at Hotel Marshfield, another, a work experience, not an employment hire yet, at Security Health. Kirsten is employed within the hospital, Kirsten, I think, is her name? I guess there were two hires, and Katie also. And then this most recent graduation was seven students. They did some extra things this year. They did CPR and some medical health career exploration, gave the students additional opportunities for learning. And the students, again, some of them are not yet employed when it says work, that's generally meaning a work experience, it's not a regular hire yet. Ben was, is employed now at the Subway, which is within the hospital at St. Joe's. But Ben also had an internship at PC Doctors. He wanted to do something in IT, and the hospital didn't have that right experience. You can reach out to another business if you want to find that special internship that's going to work for that person. But he's loving being an employee and was hired by Subway. And as I mentioned, oops, anyway, I skipped by Matt, who was the person who was hired in the outpatient pharmacy. I think it's the outpatient pharmacy. I think I said it wrong before, but I got the chance to see these kids, and that's really what cemented it that first year. I'm like, I don't get this, I don't understand it. When you see the students, the beginning of the year, and you're like, wow. At the end of the year, they're, you know, their maturity level, their excitement, their confidence is just leaps and bounds above where it was when they started. So that's what gets us excited about wanting to do it here. As I mentioned, we submitted the application with the collaborative partners that we identified with the hopes that will get approved, but we will know one way or the other by June 25th, if we would be able to be accepted for 2015, and then we'll have to figure it out. We decided with the short time frame, we didn't have all the things on your note, but a lot of really, a lot of excitement, I think, from the school districts and...
One of the things we talked about was the graduation rate, how was that impact? And I know, Kath, you and I talked about that, and Trudy, we talked about that as well. I think there would be a minimal impact. And when I talked to DPI, they weren't terribly concerned about it, would be happy to help us explain if there was some kind of a showing on the report card that, you know, something had gone down or whatever, but they would help us explain it to the public that it's, you know, a part of the Project Search piece. But to have nine students, I think we've identified nine students already, but, you know, that could benefit from this.
And Nacusa Port Edwards were very...
Yeah, and we don't know what they're looking at for numbers of students, but we felt that the graduation rate piece was kind of negligible, I think, is where we came out. And as far as funding, these are students who wouldn't normally be here because they're staying, and we would continue to get funding for them, and that would help to pay for the teacher, so.
Any other questions?
I think in teaching these students, patients, and whatever you would call it, are necessary. Do you find that in hospitals? I mean, it's a pressure situation.
Yeah, I think, you know, the design of the internship is really important, and when you see the variety of skill sets of the students, there's some that can handle a little bit more, they would be put into a situation. But I do, it's amazing to me how the departments in the hospital not only, like, accept this, but welcome it and embrace it, and they're excited. They have more opportunities than they have students right now. So the key, I think, is that teacher, Anne Dick is just amazing in Marshfield with the way she builds those students, and I think the job coaches from ODC, I have to give them kudos too, because they're patient, but they're persistent and pushy, and it's amazing how you can see that student, even under a little bit of pressure, they're growing and capable of more than they might even have thought.
It's a good example of what higher expectations sometimes achieves. Again...
We do offer work experience through our school district now, but it's not quite the same. This would be, I would say, a bump up. It's going to be an all-day experience, and it's on the job. I mean, it's having lunch there, it's learning all the ins and outs, so.
When you compare what a successful graduate would do with one who would not be successful as far as taxes is concerned, basically, it's a good investment, isn't it?
It definitely, I don't know that number, but I would imagine there's some statistics out there, just using Matt as the example. I have to say that probably 10 years ago, prior to any Project Search, he may have started his work career, if you will, with an assessment at ODC, perhaps coming into work in the work center, and figuring out what he wanted to do. I don't think anybody, including himself, would have dreamed of pharmacy as an option. So when you look at, he's going to be full-time with benefits, a taxpayer, definitely.
So we're looking for approval from you, should we receive the grant that we can then proceed to figure out the details?
Certainly move that approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve, how do you want this worded? To approve the grant application, should it be successful?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, thank you, Pam.
I did, actually, print some handouts that I'll leave with all of you, that's got some frequently asked questions, and I think I covered a lot of them, but do that. If anybody has any questions after tonight, too, feel free to let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's everyone.
Yeah, this section's...
Okay, next we can move on to action on employee retirements, resignation, and appointments.
Prior to the start of the meeting, I handed around this issue to a paper that had some names listed. I wanted to, and I had asked Dr. Dickman to add this item to the agenda, and the event in particular of some new appointments, which we have had come together here in the last week, since we had our Personal Services Committee last week. I'd like to speak to those just briefly. The two professional staff recommendations for appointments are some individuals we were able to get confirmation on accepting positions as new hires to fill a couple of resignations that we had. And then, the additional student intern piece that's on here, I wanted to touch on this briefly. Phil Bickelhob approached me with a request to start the student intern that was selected to fill that position than we do during the school year, who was already selected for next school year. He asked if we might be able to hire and bring on that student intern this summer already, because he is short-staffed in his department due to some medical leaves that are going on. So the administration does recommend that we bring Marcus Hutton on board with the effective date there of Monday, June 23rd, to get a couple of extra months' time. date there of Monday, June 23rd, to get a couple of extra months' time out of his assistance that he'd be working in a similar capacity to the summer help college students that we have hired on. And then finally, we had a late, unexpected resignation, first and foremost, from Marg Gobman's, Legal May Merritt, but she does go by Marge. This is a retirement request on her regard. Technically, we listed as a resignation because she is not eligible for the early retirement benefit, but she has made a late decision here over the weekend requesting to resign from her position. And then, as long as we are bringing names forward, we did have the support staff resignation request for cashier, so we thought we'd add that to the list right away.
Well, we may have this as a running agenda item, just because staffing tends to go on all summer long, so...
Yeah, in particular, the two new teachers, they're very anxious, wanting to have contracts in their hands because of leaving other opportunities or leaving other positions. So with your approval, and as soon as they successfully complete the background check process, we're looking to be able to get contracts to them by the end of the week.
I would move that these appointments and resignations be accepted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the appointments and resignations as posted tonight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you, Ryan. Next, we can move on to the discussion and possible action to approve the 2014-15 district health insurance renewal rate of 10.88%.
We actually discussed this at a previous board meeting, but did not have you specifically approve the 10.88 renewal. I mean, not that we have a lot of choice in it, but we did approve the change in deductibles, but we failed to have you, we didn't bring a motion forward for the actual renewal rate itself, which is why it's coming through at this time. I don't know if anybody has questions about that, or...
I would make a motion to approve the 2014-15 district health transfer call rate of 10.88%.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the 2014-15 district health insurance renewal rate of 10.88%. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we can move on to discussion and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated August 27, 2012. That was easy to say.
Yeah.
What does "defeasance" mean?
Defeasance means elimination or... Is it a thing of bond?
But they just say that.
We wish they would too.
Because that's the word that the industry is using for that transaction. It's a complicated transaction, so it's a little more...
So over the past several years, you've been defusing some debt right along, and so this is yet another one, another bond that we're looking at that will come due in the next year or two at quite a cost, so we're looking to pay off some of that now to mitigate the amount, I guess I would say?
Yes, it would, it means it pushes out the need to budget for that three more years into the future, so...
But it also decreases the amount in that we owe three years in the future.
That's right. It also decreases the value, and there's some interest savings on that. About, I think it was about $40,000.
I would move...
Do you want further explanation, though, from Dan, to maybe certain...
Yeah.
Okay.
Give us Plan B a little...
There was, you... There was some debt for the chick modifications to the retirement system. You issued a bond to cover and pay off the retirement system because the retirement system was paying us 8%, and I think at that time, we reissued it for like 5%. And then that was, that was again refinanced, and we restructured it so that the bond payments didn't occur until three years into the future, so we didn't have to budget for those at that time. Well, now, they're about one year in the future, and we'll have to, that's something we would have to budget for next year if we didn't defuse this, but we have some funds because of the way we're doing our budget, covering our budget shortfall for next year. We're using some funds from the...
Fund balance?
Yeah, well, it would go into fund balance if we didn't use it for this purpose, but it's from the savings from the, what would we use for the health insurance?
The HRA.
HRA, thank you. Savings from the HRA. We have an HRA to cover some of the high deductible costs of a health insurance plan. Those savings are enough to cover this, and then we're going to use them next year, then we don't have to budget for those next year. So that's how we're covering some of next year's shortfall. But anyway, does that answer your question about...
So did this use all the savings from the HRA, or just a portion of it, and some of its other savings are...
It's a combination of savings. It's not just the savings from that, there's some other savings that go into it also. When we restructured our debt three years ago now, we had an amount that would go into fund balance, because we used the fund balance to pay off the debt, we're using some of that also. And the reason for that is to increase our state aid so that it mitigates increases in tax. Is that, any more questions on that? There's a lot of moving parts, Hunt.
We're not going to put, we're not going to put as much into fund balance, we're going to instead use some of those dollars to pay this debt down.
Those are the two primary sources of the funding. It's the amount that we had targeted for fund balance, plus the savings from the HRA. Those two combined are other funds. And the reason to spend it rather than put it in fund balance, it will mitigate any increase in our tax levy.
There's a variety of benefits.
And also push off the need to budget for it three years more into the future.
And it won't be as large a hit when it comes, because we'll pay it down.
Any other questions for Dan?
Well, I don't want to hear that.
It's similar to what you've done the last two years, where you actually just paid off a total, complete bond issue. This isn't paying off a complete bond issue, but it's covering three out of the seven year, there's seven years of payments on it, it's covering three of those.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to the defeasance of certain of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated August 27, 2012.
I'll second that.
Okay, the documents for signature, the, Corso Brady called me this afternoon. The documents, they'll be putting those into the mail overnight tomorrow, so someone, whoever has to sign those, will have to sign them.
You and I, Larry, do it tonight? Can we do it tonight?
No, they're not here yet.
Not here? Oh, I'm sorry, they're not here. I thought you meant this...
The legal language that was in the documents was based on the bids for the escrow account, and that you have to put in the document, and that they'll be sending those out. Should we get any of those tomorrow or Wednesday?
Okay, just let us know.
This is the understanding that Dan can't retire within five years. Was that part of the motion?
I think I heard that. All right, we have a motion in the second to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to and the defeasance of certain of the taxable general obligation refunding bonds dated August 27, 2012. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to discussion and possible action to approve district-wide sick leave bank modifications.
So some years ago, we created a sick leave bank, back somewhere between 2002 and 2006, because I was in the Human Resources Department at the time, and was part of that creation. It was intended for teaching staff who had run out of sick days and hadn't quite made it to the long-term disability, and that they had a catastrophic illness. Since that time, since 2006, it has expanded, and we have reviewed it and are looking to pull back to the original intention of the sick leave bank. I don't know if you have anything you want to talk through the document, or...
And I handed, prior to the start of the meeting, I handed out a, it's a two-page stapled document, together with page one. The cover shows what the new version recommended update would look like. The second page outlines what Dr. Dickman is alluding to. When we rewrote this proposed recommendation, we began with the original contract language that came from WREA back around 2006, as Clayton referred to. And similar to the style of when we update board policy, we did strike through on forty changes to take out, and the words that were to add in or replace are bolded. So, you know, again, we worked out from that original sick bank language that was in place some years ago. I think the two primary adjustments that come into play here are, number one, specifying that it be available for circumstances that involve the employee themselves, and that we try to more clearly outline that it's for catastrophic illness or injury type events. The requests in the last couple of years have gotten to be where they are, pretty frequent. I did a review prior to the meeting today. The last school year, we've had nine requests in a year. Prior, we had seventeen requests to access the bank. The reasons for those requests really do vary, and that's where, in particular, coming into the two variables that I just referenced, that we'd like to drop this back a little bit and be a little bit more clear in what that is, because, you know, not only are we in a situation where the degree of injury or incident varies, but based on the system that's been in place, timing is really very critical since. Our employees that donate can only donate once per year. What time of year you have your situation with that request in can be very advantageous or at a great disadvantage. In other words, if you have something that happens early in the school year, just about all of the employees are at a point where they could make a donation. You get later into the year, it becomes more and more restrictive on how much is available. The system as proposed here comes back to having a pool, a large pool, that anyone can donate to and is accessible at any point in time of year. And we did also add in something that would be new, different from what was previously in place is, and it would be the end of paragraph two, if you turn to page two, it's just referencing the fact that the superintendent or designated could call for additional requests later in the year if there would be so many requests that the available dates would be completely used up.
The other thing to just let you know about is that school year employees get ten sick days a year. Those, the teachers have ten dependent sick days, so they can use it for a dependent. In other words, all the sick days they get in a year, if they wanted to, they could use them for a dependent. Just FYI, so... Sandy, I look like you're thinking...
No, I'm just trying to breathe.
The other thing to speak to as well, as in conjunction with this, we are going through an open enrollment period for short-term disability, so we have been communicating that to our staff that may feel they're going to find themselves in a place where they will no longer, or where they may have been thinking or somewhat dependent upon wanting to access the sick bank if they're low in numbers. Based on this open enrollment period, all of our staff will have the opportunity to add a short-term disability policy if they're lower on available sick days and they want to have a little bit of security in the event that something would happen to them, to get them through that ninety-day waiting period before the long-term disability insurance policy would kick in.
I also did some searching, just briefly. Stevens Point does not have a sick bank. I didn't find anything else in our area, just simply I, it didn't show up at all when I searched, but I started to look at DC Everest and didn't find anything there as well. Watertown does not have one. Toma does, and it does include family members. Baraboo has a sick bank, it includes family members, but they can only access ten days. Onalaska has one, and they can access sixty days, but it has to, there has to be proof of the fact that the family member will be disabled for at least ninety days, and that the employee's presence is required. So they had some specifics added on to that. So we're not looking to do away with the sick bank, but really having it in place for the employee.
Well, provisions of the FMLA law to protect staff, if they need to access that, it's unpaid, but there are ways that people can take time.
Well, they can use their sick leave as well. Not just for dependent sick, but if there was an FMLA issue, they could use those days for them as well.
Will we approve the sick leave bank modifications?
Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the district-wide sick leave bank modifications. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. We can move on to discussion and possible action to approve a proposal for an architectural facility capacity study.
We received that late Thursday. Ed was bugging Steve, and we were finally able to get that. He was in and out of the office quite a bit, so I think it took a little longer than he anticipated. So we sent you a copy of what that study all includes, and I guess I would open it up for questions, and Ed is here. If I can't answer it, maybe he can. It's more likely he can than I can. And we would, we would look for approval to have Steve come in and complete this study prior to bringing any facility information back to you.
When would this take place?
He actually said he could start on as early as next week.
And then it said he was going to be talking to people in the building? Just the staff's gone?
He thought he could catch the secondary principals before they left, get some input from them, and a lot of the work would just be with myself and...
So it'd be the principals in the building, not individual teachers?
Just principals, basically.
Well, he can certainly have contact with our elementary. I mean, they're here through this week, and Monday and Tuesday of next, and if they're not, certainly we'll make contact for him and get them.
I couldn't understand, you know, what his focus was. Was it the principals, was it...
It'll be directors here, and for programmatic reasons, and principals as well.
And the list of offerings, the course descriptions, things like that, the fact that we're going to need an extra science credit coming up here, it takes things like that into account.
I asked my husband to look at this, and he thought that the cost was very reasonable, so...
Well, partially, it's because he's worked in our district before, owns the buildings, and he has some baseline to go with. I've seen studies, I don't know, Ed, you and I were looking, and shared studies anywhere from 10 to 20,000, so I was very pleased to see this. It's more than I would have liked, but it's within the realm of what's reasonable.
He wrote this down too, so, you know, if we find out that the ninth grade program doesn't fit into Lincoln, we're not going to go any further because that's, that's kind of the deciding factor at this point.
He may have other information for us, so, you know, other recommendations that...
Right.
I would make a motion to approve the proposal for an architectural facility capacity study.
I'd second that.
Do you want to include the cost?
I would, yeah.
Yeah. Do we have the total, though?
$4,750.
Okay, for $4,750.
I think that's what it was.
I was adding it up in my head.
Okay. All right, we have a motion... All right, we have a motion in the second to approve a proposal for an architectural facility capacity study not to exceed $4,750.
Maybe you want to include with Plunkett Research.
With Plunkett Research Architects. Please have roll call, Marie.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Excuse me, but shouldn't it be just 4,000? Because if he does all three at one time, we save $750. That's a deduct, isn't it?
It'll actually be $32.50 if he does all three.
I'm sorry, so that it got...
That's right.
It'll be $17.50 plus $12.50 plus...
Plus a thousand.
And then deduct $7.50 if he does all three.
So it's less than $47.50.
He said not to exceed.
We just saved.
So then it's 4,000. No, that's not right.
It's less than that.
$32.50.
$32.50.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Got to watch those takeaways.
Yeah, but the motion did say not to exceed.
Care to amend your motion?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
So $3,250. I apologize.
Even more reason to say yes. Okay, and last, we have discussion concerning the SWC 2000 hockey building.
I just, it's just something I wanted to preliminarily bring forward. As you know, some years ago, Southwood County 2000 came together and did some fundraising to put that complex together, including the hockey building, football field, track, softball fields. I'm not sure, Ryan, you can jump in any time, but the, the hockey building then, there was a group that came together and, and kind of took charge of the hockey rec center. And I don't want him to speak, so if I'm, if I'm doing so, let me know, but they, they are trying to keep the center up and running. So they've been having different venues there. They had a curling competition there recently. We've had requests for wedding receptions to be held there. They have had those, those requests. The district currently has a lease with them. We own the property, they own the building. So the land underneath, the footprint is, is ours, the parking lot, et cetera, but the building itself belongs to Southwood County Recreation. So the, the request has been, in those venues, you know, can we have a wedding reception here and have alcohol? And of course, the answer's been no, because it's on school property. They are having a junior league hockey team come into town, much like the rafters, starting this fall, and so they're discussing whether or not they would have the ability to sell beer, I think is just what they're looking at. Again, much like the rafters. They sell it during the rafters games, but they do not while our kids are playing. So we've had, I just want to bring that to you because I think we're going to be hearing more about that. They are in the state, the board itself is in stages of discussion there. There's, there's been some contact with me, just because I'm on the parking rec commission, so I've had an individual there talk with me about it. I know, Ryan, you're on the, on the rec board, so he's well aware of it, and I just think you should know about it, that that discussion is out there. Now, there are a couple of options. One is that we modify the lease that we have with them to allow it. One is to just say no. Another option would be to sell or deed them the property that the building is sitting upon. And talking with our legal, at this point in time, depending on what actually they, they request, there was some indication that we would have less liability if we gave them the piece of land that the building was on than if we just modified the lease, because if something happened due to someone having too much to drink, or whatever, whatever might happen, we could be liable since it's on our property.
So that would include the parking lot, then?
Well, however we, however we would set that up, but certainly we would want to have further conversation about this. I just, it's out there, I, I don't want, you know, I think you should start to do some thinking about your, your feelings on the matter. I would expect that at some point, the rec board may make a decision of the direction they want to go, Ryan, and you can speak to that, and they may want to come and speak with you as a board, so.
I, I guess I would just add, from the board's perspective, is they have endorsed pursuing or looking into this further as, as...
They have to be eligible for licensure. There are a few things they're going to have to go through before they even know if they could do it, I would think.
The rec center board's interest is, is continuing to allow the facility to attract and, and hold events that have supported the overall operation of the rec center. Some of the examples, Kline has already spoken to, you know, the, the junior hockey league team that's coming in, they're, they're going to be known as the Wisconsin Rapids River Kings, so that when the River Kings come to town, and they've, they've picked up this state curling tournament, which they'd like to hold, and perhaps be able to, to hold those sorts of venues more in the future. And when it, when it comes to things like that, they do, they would like to have the option of selling alcohol at events where that is typically happening, in the case of the junior hockey league, those groups where the facilities are able to serve, that is something that happens similar to what Kline mentioned, and similar, really have the, a hockey version of like what the, the rafters play on.
And we certainly want to make sure, even if, even if we were to discuss turning over the land, a portion that there was agreement of our students continuing to be able to use it. The, you know, certain pieces of the lease still in, in some format of an agreement, and that alcohol would not be sold when our kids are there playing. That's just not appropriate in my mind. I just, it's just a matter of making you aware of that. Something may be coming to you in the future as they have decided to pursue.
I do think the, the individuals from the rec center board that are, are interested in pursuing this have, have an interest in, in speaking with the board regarding this matter. So I, I think that's another reason why Kline wanted to bring it to your attention in advance of perhaps them requesting to be an agenda item where they could discuss this topic with you.
Okay. Okay, before we adjourn, our, June 23rd, we have a budget hearing at 6:00 PM, and Kline would like to hold a special closed session board meeting at 5:30 before the budget hearing. And if you could, let Marie know if you would be able to make that meeting, much appreciated. I guess with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.